She might be taking on good.
They're, it's written down, they're busy with the green down there.
Okay, excellent, I think we're ready.
We call the meeting the order. Citizenship Award, I don't think she is here. I don't think she is, but I will read what regarding your level about her. Our citizenship person is Iris from, Iris is from, is on our high school selection for the school board citizenship award for June. Iris is an outstanding student with a GPA over four point oh, is currently the highest ranked student across the twenty flag fourth. She's maintaining these grades despite constantly challenging herself with upper level classes. Iris is also a free sport athlete, excelling in cross-country basketball and track. In addition to her academic and athletic accomplishments, Iris, Iris is just a great person. She is friendly to her fellow students and quietly leads by example. She's a positive contributor to our leadership class and a member of several clubs. She's quite hardworking and truly exemplifies what it means to be an Almira faculty. So we will make sure and search to grant. All rise to the national, please believe. All right, we'll move into the public comment portion of the meeting. We do have one person who has signed up to speak and just we know you have three minutes. And we will let you off with three minutes, you can try to finish up in that time, that'd be great.
Sure.
Then go ahead, you can stand, whatever you like.
Can I do this without getting giddy with my glasses? My name is Javon Dunin, I'm a parent of Nida and I have a daughter, I'm a student at school. The first thing I wanted to do is I wanted to just thank Jeff Neworian, I started back here. I wanted to thank both of them for their service on the board and someone who's made that will be losing very valuable board members. And I think it's unfortunate to lose both of you, but I just wanted to express my gratitude for presenting you to them. I don't know if Jeff is online or not, but okay, but to her as well. Second, as we go forward into the next school year, I would just like to urge the board and Mr. Carpenter to be thinking about how the district can address misinformation in our district if and when it occurs. Unfortunately, there is a group of people who have spread some untrue things about our district. Things such as that we're lacking project rights and transparency, that there are inappropriate literature in schools, and that the schools are pushing personal agendas and ideologies. What I understand as the tendency probably is to want to admit these things as a bit of nonsense from a small group of people. I would just note that this group has managed to convince over a hundred other people that these claims may be true. And as a result, we are now losing two very valuable board members. So if we do see this type of misinformation continue to be spread in our district, whether it's here at board meetings or elsewhere in the community, I would just urge the board and Gary to change this seriously. These don't just sweep it under the rug as a nonsense of a small group. I would urge you to begin thinking about, looking into how the district can respond to or dispel such misinformation, should we see it at the late end being to impact our district. My hope is that it won't, and I'm hoping that we're going to have a productive school year where we can address the, some of these issues that we're having with performance and attendance, and that we can do that with the best interest of all students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to approval of the minute. The last one. Anyone see any questions or anything we need for action?
I move that through the main thing to thousand twenty nation minutes, that's written.
You have second then?
Motion a second, any further discussion? Right now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries forth as you go. Next up is our enrollment report.
Hey, this is our June first enrollment report, so this is where we ended. Coincidentally, we ended up with the same number as we did last June.
You called eighty-eight.
I did double, triple. We were up and down in a few spots, but in the end, it was one thousand two hundred eighty-eight. But we were down fifty-two from our proposed budget. Last year, we were down a hundred from the proposed budget, so we were closer to our projected budgeted numbers this year, even though we are still down. All I have on that.
Board, any questions?
I don't.
So I did notice that the Nida continues to have, you know, on average, at least three more students.
The class size.
In classes and I, I guess we're just going to have to figure out how to handle that sometime.
Yeah, consistently been about two, I think this two point two gap or two point two six gap is as big as it was all year as we've been writing on too. We do a few things to compensate that, they have a few more regular IA hours. Next year, they're going to have an equivalent more based on total number of students, title IA hours. You know, in district our side of the two elementary schools, impossible to be balanced. The only way we can ever rebalance is if we want to do a K-two school or three-five school. Then having all of our kinders in one building, that's for four perfectly balanced rooms or five or six, or whatever it is. Perfectly balanced fourth grade classrooms in this model. The fact that we're ten two frankly is kind of astonishing. So we'll always be a little bit off when we, when we, you know, two is kind of about the rhythm. You start getting three or four difference per room, that's pretty significant. We could look at transfer a teacher. A teacher move equates to a little over one. A loss in the game, so like one teacher move over to the other building, unless we want to take a teacher from Almira move to Venea, maybe that even. The problem is that then at Almira, it creates chaos with almost every grade being blended, which is for kids and causes more issues. So definitely something we'll continue to monitor.
And the other model is more difficult for parents with more children.
That's right, I got four kids and they're four different schools, you know, middle school, high school, both elementary schools. It isn't, that is not, you know, solves the problems, but it's certainly not a perfect solution.
Do we have any rooms that a teacher could take in the Nida?
I've been here. All right, any other questions? All right, revenue and expenditure report.
All right, this is as of May thirty-first, so I'll have a final one next month for you guys. And we've received a hundred and two percent of our operating revenue. Last year, we were at a hundred and four percent, so fairly similar. As far as expenditures goes, we are at seventy-seven percent. Last year, we were at seventy-two percent, so a little bit higher, which we kind of anticipated just because we operated, you know, fully this year, more normal. There, you'll see there's a debit in the state school fund line, the hundred and forty-four thousand. And that's because I did a journal entry to create a deferred revenue for that timber funds we received because they'll end up taking that back next year. So it's out of the picture now, so we have it, so when they do take it back, we have that made to put back into it. Yeah, yeah. Do you guys have any questions? Think there is anything else to check on there?
All right.
I move that we accept the general fund revenue and expenditure report as written.
A second then?
We have a motion and a second to accept the general fund revenue and expenditure, have written any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
But Gary's for the two. Let's see, okay, quick, we've got several items touch base on a little later in the agenda you approve. We'll want to approve the OSEA contract that we negotiated a long time, but got it done. Want to thank Jackie with this phase of the meeting, because the board rep on there. I think it's one that our folks are happy with and glad that's finished. Both of the first time we got, I've ever had a four-year agreement, so I'll do it again until spring twenty-seventh. Also, something I kept informed of in our Friday update emails, but come to conclusion on the three-year agreement. Adjusted their whole of next year, which was the last year, but you like extended for another year. So next year, we won't be bargaining any contracts. However, next year, we will have the Wesleyan charter renewal, the end of their five-year contract is next year.
Well, and it's probably a good thing that we aren't going to have other contracts.
Yeah. Some of our projects are going well. Lots of carpet using S for dollars projects happening, main hall wave, Venea, polished concrete rooms. Getting ready to get some quotes on the middle school, possibly to this room. Classrooms at the middle school, the band and choir practice rooms. So lots happening there, also Venea siding project. There are about two or three days into refinishing high school gym floor and grandstand removal started today. So lots happening there. Legislative update, those of you, I think I might even forward this to you, is touch base on a few things. Legislature, legislature, gap around yesterday at four twenty-six PM, there was lots of new legislation that will be impactful. I will touch base on a few of them. One is the early literacy grant, not a hundred percent sure how that's going to work. It's ninety million dollars statewide and requires a twenty-five percent a local match. So it's something, again, they just finalized all this language yesterday, it's going to take some time to dive in how we're going to access that if we are, what we're going to use that for. The other, well, I guess one more thing to mention on that is we could get involved with those dollars, it's birthed the third grade. So, you know, one thing that we're talking about considering is setting a little bit more money into some pre-K things. Help families, parents have kindergartners that are a little stronger readers or that kind of thing. Abbreviated school day, seven, bill eight nineteen was a big one. We require some significant changes in the sped world. I don't know that it will be too significant for us, but essentially if you have now, if we have a kid in an outer district placement, which, you know, right now we have dozen, twenty.
Twenty.
The minutes that they're a third grader at an outer district placement, they need to be stirred the same amount of minutes that a third grader in their home district is served, which makes it very hard for those folks who have people from Fresno, College of Roman, the G and Springfield, all on different schedules and different minutes. The other piece is, you know, occasionally we might have a need for a student in our district that's placed here to be on a shortened day for somebody. Well, now, when you do that, it requires a monthly, if the kid's on IP, a monthly IP meeting to confirm that this is still a best placement, parents are in support of it, exactly. So that bill is definitely going to have some impact. They reduced the middle school PE minute requirements, not going to change anything for us this year, but might in the years to come. And I think those were.
One fifty down from two twenty-five?
Yeah, it was a two twenty, you mean big events?
Yeah.
Yeah, from two twenty-five to an average of a hundred and fifty minutes during, during the school week.
So is that essentially two class periods?
It would be three hundred and fifty.
Oh, the reduction.
Oh, the reduction is, yeah.
Seventy-five hours, so about.
Maybe one and three quarters and really, I mean, the way our schedule is, I'll probably reduce it by about a class and a quarter. Which means, you know, but it's, the main change is it's an average as calculated over the duration of the school year. So good IP, good IP for a semester, kind of, you know, in our current model. What does that look like with that average two hundred and fifty minutes of course of the year? That would be the way we do it, not, you know, kind of, I suppose we could also do it every other day kind of deal.
That gets complicated really quickly.
Yeah, but it is something that they changed, so. The Wesleyan charter review I started on today, remember, I do an annual review of them, I met with them a week or two ago. Last week on Tuesday, she gave me her annual report, I started writing up the report. I will get it to her by Friday, it'll be on the July school board agenda. You know, it'll be short, couple pages, it'll include my write-up of a couple pages, her report that she's to this to the district each year, and the checklist that we're going to go through, everything. And so again, I'll get that to them by next Friday, it'll be on July board meeting. And the last thing I'd mention as I started, the handbook adjustments for twenty-three, twenty-four. Typically, the board approves the handbook, probably be July also. And I'll just point out any significant changes, there's lots of edits and tweaks and like the temperature thing in elementary school health room best practices now a hundred, a hundred point four degrees instead of a hundred. The most significant thing I think it changed in this handbook is the no fees in twenty-three, twenty-four. So at all levels will be no required fees. So we're changing all that language. When I, I've done three buildings, so what I haven't done is the high schools, I'll do that next, once it gets done. Again, I'll share any of the changes with you that are significant in July, or approved the handbook downs. That's all I got. All right. Next is our budget, so I will open a public meeting for public comment only on the budget. If there is no public comment, then I will close me and move on to resolution. Good job. But, but just, so the resolution number is at the top, and you need the total, is that correct?
Yeah, the total, also the debt, yeah, the funding taxes.
That right there, that part, so thirty-nine thousand five hundred sixty-three, two hundred ninety-five, and then those two, one and two, right? So we do need for action.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-two dash point three slash twelve in the amount of thirty-nine million five hundred sixty-three, two hundred ninety-five dollars with a tax rate of, sorry, at the rate for one thousand of assessed value of four dollars and eighty-two point four cents in the amount of two million five hundred eighty-six, nine hundred ninety-nine for debt service for general obligation bonds.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the resolution, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
But Gary's for the zero. Next up is our discussion, I'm for a lion's update, Mr. Story. Firstly, we haven't met Mr. Story, Mr. Story is our new Mr. Beastman, so this is him.
Well, hello to me at all. I am just standing briefly to introduce, you know, rep from the line system, this is Brad Stilner. He's going to explain a little bit about the maintenance agreement that we've entered into with the lines, which should go a long ways towards helping us work on the things that have been deferred maintenance and getting those into actual.
Thank you, thank you for having me. First thing is, I am pretty excited to get an opportunity to do this for you guys. It, it, it's something we want to work into to where we can kind of, kind of part of the team. And how it all started is we've been coming out and helping with the facilities repair face-wise. So we're coming out, we're doing repairs, trying to get things working, I know you get another call. And our techs have been coming to me and saying, hey, you guys are bleeding, they're bleeding, and we got to help them. So I said, give me your ideas. And the biggest thing was, what if we can get maintenance out there, we can get, where we get maintenance agreements out there and we start maintaining it, get our arms around it, and start finding out what exactly is every issue, how do we get that fixed, and then how do we continue to not have those issues? And how do we, and so what we did is I came out, did a full survey of each school, looked at every piece of equipment, wrote down model numbers, serial numbers, belt sizes, filter sizes, everything that's going to need to be done, the tonnage coils, the boilers, you know, is just everything. And then as a team, we get together, we figure out what's he going to take for us to make sure this is going to get done and get done properly, and properly is our standards, but also manufacturer standards. We do take notes into consideration, but our standards at times may be a little hair and that. And then our big thing was, you know, also it's one of the reasons we kept coming out, and it's for the kids. And if they're going to school and it's winter time and it's sixty-seven degrees in the question, that's not good for them. The other thing is, we want to make sure we're getting the quality air into, into the school and into the rooms, those type of things. So what I did is get together, we put, we put a plan together, and we come up with how many hours is it going to take first school to do what needs to be done? And the neat thing is, is two of the guys on this thing that were working on it, they are your friends out here, neighbors. We have two or three guys on our, on our staff that actually live out here and have kids going to school out here. So that's kind of neat, and the dedicated rep did one, so that'd be nice. But, so the number of hours that we're going to put to use out here, the high school, for here, we will put in four hundred and six hours of maintenance. It's a large facility, a lot of equipment, a lot of maintenance, difficult maintenance, and some of the, the units are up in title ceilings. So you use a ladder, you got to get inside, you're working in very small areas. We're going to try and get all that to where, you know, we've got that area. The middle school will be a hundred and forty-four hours of maintenance. The Almira elementary school, be a hundred and fifty-six hours of maintenance, and the Nida elementary be a hundred and thirty-four hours of maintenance. Now, our first time out here, we, we were lucky to get this finalized itself, so we can get on top of this while the kids are gone and out of school. And our first thing that we'll do is we will come out and our techs will go through every piece of equipment, maintain it, clean it, redouble check model numbers, shield numbers, filter size, belt size. They're, they're a lot more expert than I am, but I think I did. But they'll find some things, which is my own. And so we'll get that, we'll get that done first, and then also along with that, they will have suggestions for repairs, maybe even some replacements. Now, if that is the case, where we want you guys to know one reason why we wanted the maintenance agreement also is, is less dollars for us to come out with a maintenance agreement and work on things than it is without, you're not paying a higher fee or charge or any of that. That's one way we were able to start making it to make more sense. The other thing is what we do is we have twenty-four hour service, twenty-four hour service, our response times two hours. How we got Derek that lives on James Road, so I think we can get him. And a couple others doing here, so. But the other thing is warranties, what we've done as a company to help, because we don't do residential, we specialize in schools, commercial and industrial. And what we do to help people out is if we do a repair on a piece of equipment for you guys, you're going to get a year warranty on that.
On the repair.
On the repair. And then say we do need to replace a unit on one of those buildings. We replace that unit, you're going to get a two-year warranty instead of the one-year factory warranty. We're going to add another year warranty into that. Reason is, is back in the seventies, eighties, even early nineties, these things were like battleships, they didn't, they weren't, they, they lasted. You know, they're not made the way they used to be anymore. And what we, over the years, what we found out is, gee, month eleven, we're starting to have issues, month twelve, month thirteen, you know, and they, they just, especially for a district or a nonprofit, they've just put in a budget to have us do this, and now we're going to go to them and ask for a moment, it's a little difficult. So we've added another year to the warranty to hopefully help that. And then in turn, what we're going to do, our techs are going to be down here and they're going to do that, and they're going to come up with suggestions. And the suggestion is going to be, how long do we believe this unit has until it may need to be replaced? And then we can get, we'll have all that information, and then we'll get cost on what that would cost to replace it, and we can start helping you guys with budgeting down the road. That's part of being the partner, good with you guys. And the other thing that we noticed with how that they have not been maintained, I honestly believe from what I've seen over the years, doing this with other schools, other big commercial properties, with good proper maintenance and the right timing and everything and cleaning, I think you guys would see a ten to fifteen percent savings in energy costs. They're just going to run with more efficient. And then also, when we add, if we do need to add new equipment, you're going to get more efficient equipment. So we couldn't even see a bigger increase there, but I think it's going to be positive. I'm pretty excited to see how it all comes out, and hopefully the kids are pretty excited to be a little happy next year. Any, any questions?
So I am curious, how come Almira elementary has the highest number of hours after the high school, when it's a relatively used school?
The equipment. It's bigger, you work, it's, it's a lot more complicated equipment, it's more efficient.
But.
But along with the efficiency, comes more to do.
Words and things like that.
Yes, it comes more to doing it. And what, that's the other thing too, is that we all, we're going to work, we're working on control, we're going to be working on the control systems and make, to make sure that all that is lined up and get it back online to where James can keep an eye on it and know what's going on with each school. That, that's our, that's our ultimate goal.
Yeah, thank you. This sounds wonderful, but I have a question, did I understand you to say that the, the group that we have hasn't been properly maintained?
I would say that, I don't know that it hasn't been properly maintained, I think it's been tough to maintain this amount of equipment with, with what was, with the way it was being done and being done. There is a lot, it's just changing filters on this equipment takes hours with how much there is. And so I, I wouldn't say the effort was there, definitely. And, and the filters were getting changed, but not maybe, you know, if you get to where, if the, if the, they had a guy doing filters, he gets done doing filters with all, of course, well, he's back at doing filters, just be ahead of, you know, to where the, to where we have to do air swiftly, you know, and everything. And then what about cleaning coils, when do you have time for that? So we're coming in to try and re-release that pressure. And, and the one thing that that does, if you take a pie chart and you look at certain things like we, we do, you know, you look at replacing equipment, there's a cost there, repairs is a cost there, there's cost of energy, you know, all this, there also is administration. replacing equipment, there's a cost there, repairs is a cost there, there's cost of energy, you know, all this, there also is administration cost or in-house cost, we like to call it. We're gonna shrink that in-house cost down some because they're gonna be able to concentrate and do more of what other thing would need to be done that, that for the school district and we're gonna help take that off the, the shoulders and reduce that, that, that did reduce that in-house cost some.
What is the company?
ALIANT, A L I A N T Systems. And the other thing about this, you guys, is we, North Eugene High School, the new school, we did the whole, we did all that. All the new stuff that's happening in Springfield this, this year and it's getting going right now, we're, we're going to know all that. Any of the new university Oregon buildings that you see, we've done that. So we do all the construction also. We have teams that do that, we have plumbing teams, we got a plumber that's over there out here, we are only going out to worry about going about everywhere else. Now we've got four other vehicles, the other thing it is, it helps cost wise, we get to paying the bills. You gotta pay the bills versus paying those, they're all under one face. It's not going here, there and the other, so we just cut her down, so you can concentrate on other things.
And I, nothing I add is, you know, for so long, we have one person in charge of all these systems. And, you know, I don't know how many hours he adds up there, but it's like a full-time person. You know, were we maintaining them to standard? I'm sure we weren't, right? I mean, I don't think that time, when we, when they were coming around two years ago by, uh, this came on our radar, this seems to be a problem. They were finding filters that hadn't been changed in eight years. You know, or a hole in event where we've been heating the attic. And now all these things over the last two years, it's probably been fixed. There's no doubt this last school year, we were the most efficient, we've been the last twenty. Now, because there's still things breaking, yeah, the stuff's old, we haven't bought a new unit in a long time. Um, but, you know, for us, for, for the things that they're doing, you know, whether it's uh, how many times a year we change the filters, four, four, yeah, we've never changed four, four times a year. Um, blowing out the coils, that was probably is a, as needed basis, they're doing it every time. Um, and, and we're gonna have someone alongside of them, you know, their contract, our contract with them, I think is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this.
For a little, yeah.
Um, and, but we're, they're doing everything. And we're gonna definitely get some folks that in the years to come can take on some of that, we can help them. Uh, so we'll get somebody trained in making sure we're using the exact right size filter, that it's pointed the right direction. I've seen lots of pictures of, oh yeah, your filters are in here right, they're all backwards, you know? Um, just to make sure that, so anyways, they're gonna do everything with this issue, whether it's changing development cycle and, and maintaining things. Uh, like you said, you know, giving us information on long-term needs and talking with, um, with the land. Last time we met, we identified kind of middle school units as being the most, uh, uh, you know, probably the next one we're gonna need to buy. We've set aside money in a reserve account, twenty-three, twenty-four, to start building up this money. Each one of those is a quarter million dollars. Um, so it's, you know, they're not cheap.
But the, this, this is a great opportunity for us to, you know, we're not coming in wanting to, we want to help. And the neat thing is, is if we can figure it out, and you know, we gotta weigh it out. But we, but if we can get to where we can get somebody that can do the filters and they're, they're feeling good about it, they know where they're at and they know how fast they get it in and they know they can get it done and then maybe even teach them how to change belts, we can cut that cost down from what we know, we can take care of it bigger than it. But and, and maybe we can, they're all made better, but it's something we weigh out. Just, so, yeah, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it. Thank you. And anything, get to James and he can yell at me and.
Great. All right, we'll move on.
Did you have something else, I saw you raise.
Well, I didn't make sure you marked it, maybe to grab.
No.
Oh, okay.
Nothing. We'll move on to approve the agreement with the OSDA and, um, I got. Do you have anything else to talk about? Are you basically done here? No, maybe there's a lot of tweaks, probably twenty, there's the language things, most significant things, you know, the dollars. Um, are uh, what our folks are, our, our financial package to our OSDA folks is as competitive as anybody in Lane County. The difference for us that makes it a little bit difficult is we pay significantly more to insurance for our employees than any district in Lane County. We're the only district in Lane County that has vacation pay for our classified employees that are not twelve months. So, um, our starting salary has been low, you know, compared to others. Um, so we started to close that gap. At the same time, you know, like I said, our total financial package to our classified folks is uh, will compete with any school district in Lane County. That was the biggest change here, we agreed to three point nine, three point nine, three point nine in year two, three and four. And in year one, the, uh, base pay increase was a dollar amount. Uh, for some classifications, it was, I think, a dollar twenty-five, is that right? And a dollar for others, which equated to about nine to eleven percent. Um, also solidified the index, maybe consistent across all the columns, it'll be a lot easier in the years to come. Um, so overall, it took a lot of time, but overall, I think this is where we end up. That would require more action.
I make a motion to approve the Oregon School Employees Association, FERBIT Chapter Thirty-five with Lane County School District Twenty-eight J, um, the agreement.
I'll second that.
We have motion, second, any discussion? Here none, all those in papers, say hi.
Hi.
We'll get that scanned and geared up on the website this week. All right, so next up is the proposed board meeting calendar for next, this one year. I think you probably all seen this. And if there's no questions, then you can take action.
I move that we approve the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, board meeting calendar as published. I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, do we, any other discussion? Here none, all those papers say hi.
Hi.
Much curious, cool. All right, good timing, Ms. Marshall, you are up for curriculum.
Perfect timing because we get in the car and they're like, be quiet, gonna have to get on Zoom here. That'd be about different than I can. Okay, so for math adoption, are you gonna blow that page? Um. So this is what was on the website and this is kind of a very similar process to what we did last year for English Language Arts. So we started in September, we actually started last, last summer because what happens is your publishers and your E S Es and all of the people that do professional development want to get in and start talking to you. So we started a lot of that work last summer. In September, we met with our team, so we had K five team, six eighteen and a nine twelve team. Our six five team was pretty big because we had reps from both elementaries across all grade levels and then also specialists like our title folks and our principals. Middle school, high school, we're just the department, so the math departments for each place. And so then what we did was we came together early in the fall and we had a micro PD from our Lane S D specialist, Maddie Aherne, who is also on Oregon's like state math council, so she's really knowledgeable, she's very familiar with the standards and what's out there and what works. So she came in and talked with each of the teams, then what happens, kind of January, February, the teams brought in, it ranged from anywhere from ten approved O D E curriculums to sixteen. So the teams have to kind of like go through that, choose their top two or three to really dig into deeper. So the biggest thing that we did first was we tried to just get rid of a few. So that was our very good curriculum, it was like, what can we just say no to? So we first narrowed it down to like seven weeks, then we looked a little bit more, then we narrowed it down to our two or three that we wanted to take back to our staffs, share with folks, uh, do more, get, we did online meetings with publishers, we got quotes, we got samples, some of the teachers caught samples in their class. Um, and then around May, I put out this document. And so each of these have the video of the presentation, so you can watch that, there's parent information pages, there's demo accounts that people could log into and we scrolled up a little bit. So each one, we did that for. And then they also had a community engagement feedback form, we got one response. And it just said, I hope you had teachers on the team, which of course we do. And they didn't leave any, uh, contact information, which I said that they won't need to reach out to them. They couldn't do that. So I don't, I feel like everybody feels really good about it, every building is going with their top choice. Nobody felt like, oh, we couldn't get on the same page and they had to argue it out, everybody went with their top choice. So that's where we're at, um, K five is status and vision, uh, six eight is mid-school math and nine twelve is open up resources. So nine twelve is a little bit messy, just because that's where the Oregon State standards were the most impacted at the high school level because they're a two plus one model. The two plus one means you have to have your core algebra, geometry and data. And then your plus one, which is your third year of math, instead of going algebra, geometry, calculus or something like that, your plus one can be aligned to your career choice. So we have a couple of different choices for plus one, so that's just, we're not adopting a plus ones right now. So there's lots more work to do there. So as of course, we need to approve the curriculum reduction. Or if you have any questions.
Any questions, yeah. All right.
It's an intensive process, I'm, I'm ready for something a little bit lighter, after E L A and math and the next year's science.
So only one response from the community, is that right? The rock parents or whatever?
Yeah, and, and the responses say like if it was a parent or teacher or anything, it's all, they just, do they have any feedback based on this?
So just, I want to ask a clarifying question. Um, at the high school, you're saying that you're buying algebra, geometry, but the plus one is still to be determined?
Yeah, and we have some plus one courses already, so, um, I'm trying to think what they.
Traditionally, the high school model was geometry, algebra one, algebra two. You took every course at that school, the lowest GPA, most difficult course for every kid that was required is algebra two.
Okay.
So, so, uh, you know, like the state of Oregon recognizes that, we did eight, ten years ago and added the end a, um, applied math. Well, now they're wanting more of those type of courses. Frankly, not every kid is an algebra two math kid, but can we get a carpentry course, can we get a statistics course, other things that meet a criteria that are more specific to career and not simply have kids have to go to algebra two?
Um, I move that we approve the, uh, all of the math curriculums, uh, K through twelve.
I second the motion.
Your motion, second, any other discussion? Here none, all those papers say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is the new curriculum at the high school.
I just want to say that I wanted, I wanted to focus.
Uh, Emmy Erwin has something else to tell. What happens when they want to do a new course approval, they, first they kind of type up this response and fill out their packet and they give it to the principal to approve and then it comes over to the D O. So, um, both of these are pretty normal procedure. One is criminology and one is mythology, one is a social studies elective and one's an E L A elective. Um, and what they provide is kind of the scope and sequence. Um, and I, you know, it's based on student interest, that, you know, they're trying to do what the kids want at the high school that still meets state standards, that's exciting and relevant, engaging and can be tied to, um, different courses at L C C or U L S U.
And these all, remember these always come to you and we've never taught it before. There's a lot of potential, we'll add a new course, oh, ten years ago we taught it as a company, but we've never taught it. We used to have a law studies class, which was similar to the criminology one, but different enough, we needed to do this. And mythology is something they.
Do we need to?
Yeah.
Do we need that several?
I don't think so, just a new curriculum.
I move that we approve the new curriculum, criminology and mythology, A and B, as stated.
A second.
Good motion, a second, uh, any discussion? Here none, all those papers say hi.
Hi.
But, curious, four to zero. All right, next up is our breakfast and lunch pricing. You want one of us? Go ahead.
Yeah, that's me, um, but I don't know if you remember pre-COVID, we would do this every year.
Yeah.
And then the last couple of years, it's kind of been off because we were doing seamless summer. Um, but we're trying to get back on track, you know? Um, so O D E recommends that the adult milk prices, um, are set to cover all the milk, cost of the meal, basically. Um, and there's a little tool that they provided, so I use that to calculate that. Um, so I recommend increasing the adult lunch prices from four oh five to four thirty and then the breakfast from two oh five to two fifteen. And that would of course start at the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then as far as the lunch prices go, uh, the maximum, um, increase you can do for a school lunch of ten cents. Um, so I recommend doing that for now. Um, it's possible that once the new reimbursement rates come out, um, general fund will need to kick in the difference. We, we might be having to do a little bit of catch-up because we've had seamless summer the last two years, so, um, but it wouldn't be an increase to the students, it would be an increase to our general fund, which we used to always transfer general fund money into there. It's just not happened since nineteen twenty. Um, anyways, the prices are listed there, the current ones, and then what the new ones would be for twenty-three, twenty-four.
And it seems like when we were doing the, these regularly, it was ten cents.
Yeah, generally, yes, yeah, um, I can't think, because that's the like minimum, maximum requirement by the state, so we always just did that. And then if there was a cost beyond that, the general fund would just pay for that, yeah. So that will be the plan this year as well. And, and looks, last year it wasn't released until August, but there are temporary reimbursement rates, which they're hoping to get away from, but that's still lingering on from the whole COVID thing, so. And I don't know that I have that, it's more just the, this is the motion, what I'm feeling, not what I'm doing. Yeah, I agree with board policy, there's nothing in our board policy that says you have to, you know, take the motion on.
Go on, sounds good. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to, um, nine G, which is the approval of the, uh, altered programs that are kids utilized, our students. Yep, so these are the ones that are around Lane County, where we have, have or could have students. All these programs are evaluated by, uh, typically a different superintendent in Lane County gets assigned one. Um, that's the way they get on this list. Uh, so we do this, this does require, um, board action and this will be our list for twenty-three, twenty-four and don't think there's any significant changes.
And these programs are creative for our kids out for school district?
Yeah, or sometimes if a parent requests, um, and the I P team or the school team agrees. But usually, usually it's a, it's a placement recommendation by the school district that we can't serve them here, here's some options that we're willing to fund.
And we paid for them?
We pay a lot for these placements.
But do we track the kids at that point or is it?
Oh yeah, for school, our kids. Yeah, we, 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 um, for example, if the brands is their case manager, our bed director is the case manager around I V, which a lot of times these kids are, um, we go out and administer their state tests that they need up. Uh, so we stay engaged with them and the family that are here. That's prior board approval.
I move that we approve the alternate education programs for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
My second motion.
Your motion, a second, any discussion? All papers say hi.
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 Very much here, it's four to zero.
Although, Michelle, I did just notice that, um, there, two thousand nine. the two thousand nineteen, the twenty.
Yeah, well, before we put this up on the website.
All right, moving on to personnel, licensed personnel, uh, we have a number of and we have a couple few resignations and, yeah. So please do take a, a total for action.
I move that we approve with the hiring and resignations of our licensed employees as listed.
One second.
Good motion to second, any discussion? Here now, all those in papers, say aye. And then just for information, our non-licensed personnel, we do have a few, um also that we have a few resignations and a couple retirees and then some coaches that we have hired, some that are left.
So the hiring of Carson Lang, I have to admit, makes me feel pretty old.
I believe that his girlfriend was, was girl's husband, it was last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, was she the head coach or? I think that Carson's dad said, but you know, oh yeah, yeah, I think he probably will. Maybe, yeah, our folks that are hiring, I'll get out some thank you letters, notes this week on behalf of the school. Uh, like, I have a to-do list of several folks, I see Pam's other name's there for sure, she's
Uh, what, is she, is she retiring for?
Is retired.
Yeah.
She's already bird watching and has to choose this right now.
Oh, nice.
Right, um, any later closing comments or later after closing time?